Oh.
Really?
Do you have a, do you have a handheld? That way we can stand and walk around.
And if they have any public commenters before we go.
Yeah, we tend to wander around.
We're wanderers.
Test, test.
Anything you want to throw in at any point.
Mutual.
Yeah, grab one if you.
We've got to remember some pictures.
Pardon?
Pictures. You and I got to take some pictures with.
Yeah, yeah. Especially since we forgot last week.
We did. I started to do a social media post, we had nothing.
I'm looking forward, I'm actually looking forward to that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's going to be a really nice follow up.
It's fantastic.
Especially if they've state the course at that point.
Yep.
Does your ringer off?
Thank you. Actually, I have to turn my phone off.
Yeah, otherwise it'll buzz in your ear.
Oh, damn.
Test, 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 test. Test, test, test.
Good morning, everyone. This is a Paso Robles City Council meeting, special meeting, actually, for Friday, November 21st, 9:00 a.m. This is the council visioning and session workshop. So I'll start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bousch?
Here.
Councilmember Beal?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Present.
Mayor Hammond?
Here. Also, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Pro Tim Gregory.
Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. To the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have staff introductions starting, am I right? Melissa?
Melissa Martin, City Clerk, joined by Mary Spawnhall's Deputy City Clerk.
Mary? Oh, okay. Yeah, there you go. We also have our new Assistant City Manager with us here from Arizona, Dave Malwitz. Welcome.
Okay.
Chris Hewat, City Manager.
Elizabeth Hall, City Attorney.
Discussion items, we will not have any general public comment. The public may comment on special meetings as limited to the agenda only, and we'll have the opportunity to be provided when the agenda items being heard. Today, we have one discussion item, and that's the City Council Visioning Session and Workshop. Chris Hewat, do you have that item for us?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One, I wanted to introduce David, but you got to welcome him. So I'm glad to have him on board here in about a month. I think he's going to be helping, he will be helping our organization and our office in particular, really begin to implement some of the things we'll be talking about today as we go into the next budget year, and I'm excited to have him on board. I want to thank all of you for spending the time here today. I know it's the Friday before holiday week, and I know this has been a long time coming, but I am excited that we're here today, talking about the things we'll be talking about. For me, I wanted to just let the council and the community know that today is about, for me, setting the foundation for the work we want to collectively achieve next year and beyond. I talk a lot about alignment, and I hope today is, again, the start of creating stronger alignment between you all and staff. Not to say that we don't already have alignment, but I think there's always opportunity to strengthen that, and so look forward to this being the start of that. And then also making sure we're clearly identifying the roles that we're collectively playing as we advance the needs of the community. And I wanted to let the council know, too, this is really the first part, I think, of an ongoing process, and so what I plan to do today is, you notice, our department heads aren't here today. I plan to take the work that we do here today, and the feedback that's provided, and the input that's provided, and work with them over the next several months to review and discuss, and then as we move into the next budget cycle in particular, be really aligned as we bring things forward that are really going to be based and rooted in here what we're talking about today. So that's how I plan to take this work with the executive group. And then, of course, I'd like to hopefully see this as a continuing thing that we do as an organization, moving forward, this type of work. And so, again, this, I think, is the start of something for us, I hope. With that, I'll introduce Mayor Jacob Green and Greg Deveraux, who are going to be the principal today, working with you. And with that, I'll turn it right over to them to get going.
All right, very good. Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council, staff, and members of the public. Thank you so much for having us. We're very happy to be here in your beautiful community, and thanks for bringing us in. It's nice to see you off screens and see you in person and be able to work with you here together, all in the same room. Can you hear me okay? I have a bit of a.
It's different in here now.
Yeah, I do have an auditory impairment, so I may, I'm not sure how long I'm going to last with this coming in this ear, so.
Yeah.
If I ditch the microphone, I'll have to defer to the.
We all have the same problem, Jacob.
Okay, all right, very good. So, again, we're really excited to be here. Like the City Manager said, you know, this is going to be all about building alignment. We'll talk a little bit about sort of the agenda and the flow for today as we get going, but first we'll do introductions, and I'll have Greg introduce himself first.
Greg Deveraux, I was in state and local government for 40 years, primarily local government. Came up through housing and redevelopment, was past president of the California Redevelopment Association, on that board for many years, did a lot of work with the League of California Cities, became City Manager in the city of Fontana for four years, and then Ontario, its next door neighbor, for 12 and a half, and finished my career as the CEO of San Bernardino County. Retired eight years ago, and have gotten to do this kind of work on governance, which, for both Jacob and me, is not just vocation, but avocation. We are governance geeks, so we love this stuff. We could talk about it for hours. Thank you so much for having us, and we're excited to be working with you.
Thank you, and Michelle New.
Good morning, my name's Michelle New. I'm the Director of Client Services with Jacob Green and Associates. I have about 20 years of experience in local government here on the central coast and in local government-specific consulting, and I'm very excited to be here today. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I'm going to move over here and see if that's better, so I'm away from that microphone. We'll see if that does the trick. Just let me know if I need to stand somewhere else for you. Okay, very good. So our team, Jacob Green and Associates, there's 32 of us in our company, in our team. All we do is focus on California cities, counties, and special districts. Majority of us are from various executive positions in local government, and so the perspective that we bring you today here is actually not just Greg and Michelle and myself, but it's really the result of working with so many different public agencies all throughout the state. We're going to be trying to bring you some best practice today as we move forward with your community, with your organization. So our goal, very, very specific, sort of twofold, we're going to be focused on governance, best practice, really setting the fundamentals for best practice in terms of how to approach the very important work that you all volunteered and signed up to do. And second to that is using those fundamentals and using that approach in the public sector, how do we create alignment? How do we build a sense of where we're going, what the vision is, what the priorities can be, so that your City Manager can effectively bring the organization together under the council's vision for the future of your community? And this is only the beginning. A lot of times during a goal-setting workshop, we may leave at the end of the day and go, wow, geez, I feel like there's more I want to talk about, more I want to discuss. That's good, right? We want you to leave feeling hungry for more. This is just the very first step in the process of building alignment and creating your future for your community. This is a picture up here of an oil change, and the reason that we start with this is I have a Ford Explorer, it's in the parking lot, we drove over here today. I love my high-performance Ford Explorer, right? I love that vehicle, don't make fun of my Ford Explorer, it's a great Ford Explorer. Even though it's a fantastic vehicle, and it got here no problem, there was no issues in the rain, in the storm, all that kind of good stuff, no problems, every 3,000 to 5,000 miles, I do that, right? I take that high-performing vehicle off the road, let someone kick the tires, check under the hood, make sure all the fluids are good to go, so that we can put that vehicle back on the road and continue at high performance. So here in Paso, there's no issues or challenges, you're not broken down, there's not a problem with your organization, you're actually doing what's best practice, which is getting this high-performing organization, giving it a chance to check everything out, work together in this workshop, and make sure you can successfully have the organization function moving forward in the future. So we like to think of today as just sort of the start of the oil change process. All right, here's our agenda. We're going to start by talking about alignment, and I'm so glad your City Manager uses the word alignment here in the organization. We're going to be right on the same page, talking a little bit more about how this process builds alignment in the organization. We're going to move into the system of governance and the roles and responsibilities that we have within the system that we operate in. For many of you, this will be review. What we're going to try to do is bring in some, again, best practice, things that we've seen that top-performing organizations like yours benefit from being reminded of and exploring a little bit deeper in a workshop like today. Then we'll talk about vision and goals from a very high level, a 30,000-foot level, because exactly what your City Manager said, the City Manager then takes that direction, that vision, that high-level view, and translates that into the implementation for the organization. We'll be really staying out of the weeds today. We don't like to do group wordsmithing. We see that council members generally don't enjoy group wordsmithing, we certainly don't. We tried to do your homework before we got here today for you, for you to be able to provide feedback and make changes and provide suggestions, et cetera, but really, we're going to be staying at that 30,000-foot high level as we proceed today. And then we will be adjourning to closed session pursuant to your agenda under the performance evaluation for the City Manager. Are there any questions from the council about the agenda for today? Consistent with expectations?
Good to go.
Very good, all right. We will keep going. So, building organizational alignment. This is a group of water buffalo, all right? Hanging out wherever it is that water buffalo hang out, and all of a sudden, in from the outside come the lions. I'll move this because I don't want you to miss any of this animation. Very exciting part of the day. In from the outside come the lions. Now, this is Paso, this is a high-performing group of water buffalo. They have been focused on alignment for a long time. They are good at this stuff, they have practiced, they've been the alignment gym, they're all working together in unison, and they face outwards, they face those lions, and even though the lions are bigger and batter, the lions run away. In another community, far, far away from your wonderful community, there's another group of water buffalo, but they are not aligned in terms of how they are approaching the business of the water buffalo community. They are faced inward, and they are preoccupied with the internal issues and challenges of the organization, and the lions have come in from the outside. Anybody want to take a guess what happens in that organization?
Dinner.
Dinner! Dinner, exactly! Okay, that took me like four hours to figure out how to do that animation for you guys. I don't have an animation department in our team. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Made my day. Greg can do the rest now. So, yes, they get taken down, and so what we are here to do is to continue to build a sense of alignment in this organization so that we can face whatever challenges we know or don't know are going to be coming our way. Some of the time, we in the public sector, we can anticipate what those challenges are, and sometimes those lions look very new and very different than anything that we have faced before. All right. When we use the word alignment, the question often comes up, great, are we just talking about the council-City Manager alignment? No. Alignment actually starts at the very top with the community, and this is a council that is very in tune with this. Greg and I have been through your previous council meetings, your previous agendas, your goal-setting, your documents. You very much understand that the community is really the entity that starts this entire process by requesting a certain level of service, certain expectations from the organization, and then they elect representatives to help make sure those needs are met. So the second level is the council. We're then aligning one level lower, which is what we're focusing on today, which is the vision and the goals, the priorities, you call them initiatives, it's all the same thing, that then influence the budget. Your City Manager is one of the very few, I will say, and Greg can back me up on this, who actually, in our very first conversation, said, one of the primary reasons I would like a goal-setting workshop is so that we, staff, can make the budget reflect the council's goals and priorities. That is extremely rare for us to hear. Usually, we are the ones introducing that concept, but that is definitely being driven, in this case, by your city. So kudos, again, aligning through the budget. The next level, then, is to give those vision, those priorities and the budget authorization to your City Manager, for your City Manager to work with the executive team, and the executive team to work with the staff to implement the will and the vision of the council. Building alignment. Now, why? Now that we know what alignment is, I know I love that picture. Thank you, AI, right? Thank you, AI. So why focus on water buffalo alignment and building alignment in an organization? Well, the first is a sense of mission accomplishment. When we are working in all different directions, when we are not aligned, we actually can't get the business of the people done. And what I do know from meeting with each one of you individually, Greg and myself, is after we finished the interviews, we said, wow, this is a council completely and totally dedicated to service, to serving the community. You probably don't want to be up here unless you can get those things accomplished, and so alignment helps us feel this sense of mission accomplishment. The second one is confident stakeholder and community investment. Now, in just a few minutes, when Greg talks to us, he's going to really dive into the value and the importance of investment. Without alignment, we don't get investment, and I'll let Greg in just a little bit, really explore the value of investment in your community. The third is recruitment and retention of staff, be it brand-new Assistant City Managers, congratulations and welcome, or employees that have been here for a long time. In order to recruit and retain the best in the business, we as staff, and I didn't introduce myself at the beginning, but I did 18 years in the public sector in a variety of executive positions, and I know when I got to work in organizations where councils, we're not talking about, by the way, 5-0 votes, all agreeing on, we're not talking about that, that's not what alignment means. Alignment means we agree and we understand how we're going to get the business done, and aligning on what that vision and priorities are. As a staff member, it was very, it was fulfilling to work in an organization where there was alignment, where we clearly understood what the council expected of us, when the City Manager was giving us direction that was consistent with the council's vision and the council's priorities. That, as a staff member, is where we wanted to stay, where we wanted to be, because we could also get the work done on behalf of the council and the community. When there's chaos, when these things are not aligned, you start to see attrition in organizations, and, you know, as any staff member in local government will tell you, we staff, we talk, right? We talk to agencies all throughout, you know, California, and we talk about what is the environment like? Is it an environment where we can get stuff done, or is it an environment where we're not aligned around the vision and the priorities of the organization? And finally, I'll have Greg touch now on the opportunity to impact the future of the organization, the arc.
It's just a simple concept, but one of the things that I always talk with staff about is the opportunity that we have in public service, and it is a rare and unique opportunity. In public service, especially in cities, because you touch everything in the community, we have the opportunity to change for the better the arc of the quality of life in the community. Not for a day, not for a week, not for a month, not for a year, not for a decade, but forever. Now, the community may ebb and flow, but when you have changed the nature and the quality of life in the community, for everyone in it, that lasts forever, and that's what you have the opportunity to do and have been doing.
Okay, Mayor and Council, we'll transition now into the system that we operate on. The process of building alignment starts with understanding the system and the roles and responsibilities, and we like to go back to the 1800s, the late 1800s, where really this entire process started.
started, right? Many of you know, this is, we are here as a result of what transpired in the late 1800s, which essentially was, if you look at a city like Detroit, Michigan, late 1800s, early 1900s, you start to see massive development in major cities throughout the United States. Lots of increase of demands in those cities, new infrastructure coming into our cities all throughout the country. And at the time, the leadership of communities and organizations were elected officials, were politically-driven individuals. And that worked well for many, many things, except in some situations, in some circumstances, you had elected officials that may or may not be experts in running an organization. And you had elected officials who, in representing the needs of constituents, may or may not be fully impartial in how the implementation of services and programs were handled. And so, in the early 1900s, by the early 1900s, you start to see the discussion regarding whether or not there should be a new system created that separated the elected body from professional administrators. And so, you start to see some advertisements, called different things, but generally for a professional administrator to run the business and the operation of the city. And one of the great catalysts to propel this idea of a council-manager form of government was the flooding in 1913. Now, interestingly, if you look at our history over the last 100 years, most of our systems that we use today actually come from crisis and disaster. I spent many, many, many of my local government years as an emergency manager, as a disaster, passionate about disasters and helping cities and communities through disasters. The systems that we use today came out of each crisis. 1970s, you have the California wildfires, you get the incident command system. 1993, 94, you have the wildfires, the Oakland Hills, you have the standardized emergency management system, the SEM system. 2001, you have September 11th, you have the National Incident Management System. Well, the floods of 1913 really brought to light how important it is that we have professionals that are able to implement the vision and the priorities of an elected body and help us professionally navigate through the challenges that are taking place in our communities. Ultimately, in 1914, you have the formation of the International City Management Association, now City-City Management Association, where the professionals, the city managers, and the executives that run local government can get together and really deal with making sure that they are supporting the needs of the community. So, today, the system that we operate in is not just something that PASO thought, "Oh, this looks like an interesting environment." It's something that has been proven over the years to be what we would argue the best form of local government, certainly for communities here in California. And with that, we'll bring to modern day times, and we'll turn it over to Greg to talk about the municipal corporation and the roles and responsibilities we find ourselves in today.
So, why do people form cities? Historically, within a geographic area, the people that live there determine that they want to have more control of the resources, the services, and the planning of the community. So, we form cities. Now, once the city is formed and the government is established, what's the job of a city? We all work in cities. What's the job of a city? What are we supposed to be trying to accomplish?
Safety, yeah. Safety.
Safety?
Yeah.
Water?
Water?
Sewer.
Citizens' needs.
Health and safety.
Health and safety?
Roads.
Roads? Those are what we do, but is it the job? Now, so, I agree, it's what we do, and you've answered variations of, what, 95% of the answers. I've asked this thousands of times over the years. I'm old. And so, I've asked it thousands of times, and people essentially say, "Services." Now, they may articulate which services, but it's services. I would contend-
But it's not like how you receive dollars and how you spend, you know, receive resources and spend resources.
Well, that's not the job. Spending, I mean, receiving them and spending them is the job, but what's the job? The job, I would argue, is to create, maintain, and grow economic value. Now, I cheat a little bit because it is through services that we do it. And I think the easiest way to think about it, at least for me, is if we think about two different neighborhoods within our community. You drive into the first neighborhood, and it is very well-kept. Houses are all well-kept, nice lawns, parkway is beautiful, maybe there's a neighborhood park, community centers, you know, not too far from the house. Crime rate is low. A paramedic comes if you need him very quickly. Fire service is there, roads well-kept, the infrastructure well-maintained, water turns on when you need it, sewer works right. We don't have, like they do in Los Angeles, water mains breaking and streets collapsing and cars going down in the street. That neighborhood will grow or maintain its value better than the next neighborhood, and it's pretty easy to see. Now, if you go into that neighborhood, and there are dirt parkways, there are potholes in the street, high crime rate graffiti everywhere, no amenities, no park, it's real easy to see, isn't it? That that area will not maintain its value, even in a downturn, or grow its value in contrast to the other neighborhood. So, that, to me, is our job, to create, maintain, and grow economic value. Now, that leads me to the next point, which is, in California, cities are, city governments are corporations. Most of the time, we don't think about it as a corporation, but it's a corporation. Now, it may be a municipal corporation, but it is a corporation nonetheless. It's a corporation with an elected board of directors that appoints a CEO to operate. It's very much like a corporation. And it's a corporation that, like any other corporation, despite not trying to seek profit, it needs resources. It needs money. So, where does money come from for our corporations? I would argue that it comes from anyone spending money in your city, directly or indirectly. So, in California, as we know, we get property tax, we get sales tax. So, anyone spending money in your city is investing in your city, whether it's somebody buying a home, renting a unit, opening a business, developing, shopping. All of those things are eventually, one way or another, some of that activity inwards to the city's benefit in terms of money to spend on services. Now, here's the other thing we don't think about. Every single one of those people has a choice of whether to do that in our community or the community next door. We're in competition for that investment. So, how do we win that investment? Well, we win that investment by providing the best service that we can. So, if we have a lower crime rate, if it's a safer community, that certainly encourages somebody to come here. If we have better amenities, if we've invested in parks and soccer fields and baseball fields, those kinds of amenities attract people. The lifestyle choices that exist in the community, and we have helped create in the community through our planning activities, and how we deal with economic development, and how we encourage business, and how we become business-friendly, all of those things are true. So, if those things are true, and if you buy into those premises, and you realize that we're in competition for that investment, how do we need to perform in order to get it? And once again, I would posit or argue, I did go to law school, though I never practiced law, so I do tend to argue instead of posit, but I posit that it really should inform everything that the organization does. And that's back to why alignment is important. Now, my board of directors in one of the cities in which I worked was, they didn't get along that well. And I have to tell you, they didn't get along that well. We had annexed a very large area, many miles, that was a former agricultural preserve, had dairies in it. And we were going to need over a billion dollars, and this is 20 years ago, over a billion dollars of investment from the development community just in the infrastructure. So, we, yes, sir?
This is Ontario?
It is Ontario. Yep, it is Ontario. I was there when we annexed the dairy preserves, 13 square miles. A billion dollars we were going to need. Now, my council, in the back hallway, before we would go out onto the dais, would sometimes be calling each other names, sometimes they'd be arguing, but I was very proud of them because once they got out on the dais, they realized one thing. They realized that they were the board of directors of a corporation that was responsible for billions, B, billions of dollars of assessed valuation, tens of thousands of jobs, countless dollars worth of wages. They understood that they were that board of directors. Now, if you were a board of directors that needed the kind of investment that we needed in that area alone, how would you act? I was proud of them because they understood that they had to inspire stability, they had to show that it was a stable form of government, they had to have credibility. If they said, "This is where we want to go," then that meant the vision that they had and that the development that they were trying to seek. We didn't have a disconnect so that you went to the counter, to the building and planning counter, and somebody said, "Well, this is what the council wants." And then you went to the planning commission, and the planning commission said, "Well, who in the world told you we wanted that?" That didn't happen. That didn't happen because the council was clear in terms of the expectation. They communicated that to me in that instance as the city manager, so that I knew. I communicated that to staff so that they knew. And we pushed the decision-making down to the lowest level legally allowed because we could get them through the process much more quickly that way. And so, if it took our neighboring city a year to a year and a half to get them through the process, and we could get them through the six, in six months, guess where they would go? So, it was not only at the board of directors level, but every single position in the organization needed to understand the direction of the elected board of directors, or if you will, the representatives of the people who elected you to be that board of directors, that elected you to protect and grow their economic value, elected you to provide the amenities, to encourage the jobs that would provide the wages so they could afford to live here, and their children, as many of you mentioned to us, could afford to live here. Now, in Ontario, and I don't usually use the name of the city, but given that we have somebody that understands not only local government but development, in Ontario, I knew that we had succeeded when the following happened. That's one of my favorite stories, and this is, we had two-person trash trucks. And these two old grizzled trash truck drivers would go by this senior complex, it was a three-story senior complex, and when they would go to pick up the dumpster, every time that they came in, there was a little older lady up in a three-story window, and she'd wave at them. And these guys always waved back. And one day, they ran into the manager, and they said, "What's going on with that lady? She's always waving at us." The manager said, "But, you know, it's kind of a sad story. She really doesn't have any family, and she doesn't get out other than when we take her to her doctor's appointment or, you know, bring her back from her doctor's appointment. That's the only time she really gets out." These two old grizzled trash truck drivers did something really incredible. On Mother's Day, they made, didn't go out and buy, they made her a Mother's Day card and took it up to her. Now, I only have one question for you. If a friend of hers from a neighboring community had a conversation with her, called her on the phone and said, "You know, maybe, I don't know what I'm going to do. You know, they've raised my rent here, I can't afford it anymore. I don't, I just don't know where I'm going to move." What did she say about Ontario? They won that investment. And that's what we taught everybody at every single level of the organization, is that your job is to win that investment because we need money to provide the highest level of public safety that we can. We need money to protect and preserve our infrastructure because infrastructure is a funny thing. If you don't maintain it, the cost of fixing it and bringing it back up to an acceptable level explodes exponentially, and the costs grow exponentially. And so, we need money as an organization, and that's how we win that investment. Now, I talked a little bit about roles and responsibilities in terms of just the board of directors, the CEO, but let's put it back into our terms, the city council and the manager. City council is the board of directors, and you decide the what? What is this city going to do? What is this city trying to achieve? And you communicate through goals and objectives, vision, you communicate to the manager, to the organization, "This is what we want to achieve." We, as city managers, as staff, we're the how. We're the how. Our job is to advise- Our job is to advise you and our job and responsibility is to give you the best professional advice we can. Now, I've run into people, in fact, maybe in my early career, I even had some council people try to convince me that what my opinion should be on something and tell me how a staff report should be drafted because they wanted a certain conclusion. And I had to respectfully decline because I would be abrogating my responsibility if I didn't give you my and staff's best professional judgment. Now, as the decision-makers in regard to the what and the allocation of resources to that what, you have the absolute right to say, "Thank you very much for your opinion. That's not what we want to do. We want to do the following." Absolute right and responsibility. I mean, that's the form of government we have. That's the way it works. And our job, once you do that, no matter what our recommendation was, unless it's illegal or immoral, our job is to implement it to the best of our ability and to make sure that the entire organization does that. There's often confusion. I will tell you that over the years, I've probably heard this discussion more than any other. Often, there is misunderstanding of how the body or how the, the community, once they elect you, the expectation that they have of how direction in the organization is given. You know, I had a mayor that didn't come from local government. He was elected, he was a pastor in the community, he was elected, and very shortly after being elected, he would come in and he would say, "Well, you know, so-and-so told me that there's this problem, I want you to do this and I want you to do that and I want you..." Mr. Mayor, respectfully, you know, I understand what you're saying and I understand that you've identified a problem, but even though you're the mayor, this is not a strong mayor form of government. You can't legally give direction to me or anybody else in the organization. That's not the way council manager form works. In the council manager form, it's very clear that decisions only get made by the body as a whole, as a whole, in a duly noticed meeting. In a closed session, that direction can come, or in an open session, it can come, but it must be in a duly noticed meeting where the public, residents, your businesses, have the opportunity to engage in a discussion with you about whether it's a good thing, a bad thing, and how, what they would like to see. And that causes more difficulty and questions than any other thing that I think in, in local government because it's, it's easy to misunderstand it. Even if three, in a five-person council, if three members walk into the city manager's office and say, "City manager, yeah, I know there's that thing called the Brown Act, but we got together and we all decided that this is what we want you to do." What's his job? His job is to say, "With all due respect, I can't do that. Happy to listen to on the agenda and as soon as it's on the agenda and the people have had an opportunity to have input and you all give me that direction, then I guess that's what I'm going to do." But until then, I cannot do that. I cannot do that. And if it means you're unhappy enough to fire me, you know what? No one should ever take these jobs unless they are willing to be fired for the right reasons or quit for the right reasons if they have to. And I'm sure your city manager, though he doesn't like to hear this, knows that that's his responsibility. So, you know, sometimes people get crosswise over that issue. Now, I also know that, that there's often a question of, you know, council members will say, "Well, I just want a little bit of information." Well, a little bit of information is usually all right. There's a couple of traps, though, with that little bit of information. One, back to Ontario, since we raised that city, a number of the people who were on the city council grew up in Ontario. And the people that worked with the city, we had relatively good-sized staff, so there were a number of people working for the city that they had gone to school with, played ball with, deep relationships with their families. And so when they would go talk to one of them and say, "Hey, you know, there's this problem over here." It was one problem. That staff member often thought that my buddy Jerry, who I grew up with and is asking me or directing me to do that. So that's one problem. The other problem I always had as a manager, I have to tell you, is that when a council member would go directly to a staff member and talk about a problem or an issue that they really wanted to see something happen with, it deprived me of knowing about that. And yet, when it came time for my evaluation, if they had talked to somebody about it and nothing happened about it, but I didn't know about it, they still held me accountable for it not happening. I said, "Well, guys, you know, gals, that's not fair. That's not fair to me because you're asking me to manage, but if you're seeing things that I need to know, but you're telling Joe, you know, that's not fair to me. You know, I, I need, I need you to be telling me so I can do something about it because I'm responsible to you, I, I hear you. That's my job. I, I'll, you know, I'll work on it, but, but I got to know that it's happening." So it helped, it's helpful to a manager to have that dialogue and have that dialogue with you. It's important. Now, what's, what is it proper for you or the manager to ask for or do? Well, there's, I, I kind of coined a phrase that I think helps clarify that, help clarify it for me, and I think it helps clarify it for all of staff and for council members. I think everyone on this dais would agree, public service is a privilege. It's not a right, it's an opportunity, it is a privilege. But here's the trick. It is a privilege. It is a great privilege, but it does not make us privileged. None of us, city manager, city council members, should get, expect, or receive, or be treated any differently than any other member of the public when it comes to, if I call somebody and say, "Hey, there's a pothole in this street," and it happened to be my street, that's proper. You're just communicating something you may have been told by a constituent, that's absolutely Telling them, "I want that done right away," starts to cross that line. I can't expect that I can park in a red zone any more than anybody else can park in a red zone unless I've got a red light on my car, which I don't, so I can't. That's not proper and we should not expect that. So for me, it's an easy test. It is a privilege, it doesn't make me privileged. So I think that, that's, I think that's a place that'll leave us at this point. We're always happy to answer questions and I could answer any questions that anybody has or want to talk about at this point, or we'll move on to the next point.
Any questions from the mayor or council about the system of governments or roles and responsibilities?
Good.
All good? Okay. Mr. Mayor, Council, so we've covered building alignment and what alignment looks like and the value and the importance of building alignment. We talked about the system that we find ourselves in and the roles and responsibilities. Our next section will be transitioning into creating that vision and those priorities and the strategic planning process. If it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend maybe a short recess before we transition to the next.
No problem. Mike.
Stretch, break. Break.[1226.55]
Test, 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 test.
Yeah, I'm hearing it.
Yeah.
Okay, Jacob, we're good to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Welcome back. So we'll transition now into our third piece, which is talking about the goal-setting and strategic planning process. So there's five steps in this process of goal-setting and strategic planning. And again, building alignment. We bring this up because we want to align around a process, best practice process to follow moving forward. So the very first step is what we're doing today, which is governance and goal-setting. Governance and goal-setting. So looking today at the fundamental principles and having an initial conversation about some of the vision and focus areas for the organization. Step two is exactly what your city manager said. Step two is even though your city manager has not seen this slide deck, your city manager nailed it, which is our job in the staff side is to listen, to hear, to capture, and go back as a staff team and refine the information that we have heard from the council today. Is my volume okay?
Yeah.
Uh, counsel? Okay. Step three is taking that information to a public duly noticed meeting, allowing for the public to provide any public comment under the public comment section on anything that has been presented or discussed, and have the council as a body adopt the goals and priorities, the vision, and the budget. Step four is where we feel the most successful organizations reside, and it's often forgot about. Let me give you an example of this. We recently worked with a city organization that asked us to come in for goal-setting. We met with all the council members, we heard all the goals, and we came back to the council and the city manager, and we said, "You don't need more goals. There's actually confusion about when things are being done." And hey, we adopted as a council the goal of building that bridge. Where's the bridge? Step four is what builds alignment in that implementation process. It's the work planning process. It's the, here's what it actually looks like. Sitting with the city manager and the appropriate staff from the organization and taking the adopted goals and priorities and putting them into phases and quarters and fiscal years so that the progress, and by the way, assigning responsibilities and talking about the financial implications, so that everybody in the organization, the council and manager, can be aligned about where we are with the progress of that particular initiative. And that progress can be shown in a number of different ways. We use dashboards that are shared between, within the organization, sometimes externally, sometimes internally. It just depends on what the greatest needs are. But dashboards show progress and keep the council and the organization and the community aligned. And step five is almost never talked about in terms of strategic planning, but we are big believers in it, as are you, because you've actually mentioned it as a critical part of the workshop, which is the city manager's performance evaluation. Because what this process does is it gives the body criteria by which to evaluate the city manager's performance, as opposed to the city manager goes into closed session in the city manager's performance evaluation, and a city council member says, "Well, I talked to you about doing that billboard project." And another council member says, "Why didn't you do the senior program that we talked about?" City manager can't be evaluated on those things, can only be evaluated based on what the body has adopted as the expectation for performance. And so this process will allow you, once the city manager has his official performance evaluation in April of 2026, this will allow a very simple and very aligned evaluation where the city manager knows what criteria they're being evaluated on. And then it's rinse and repeat. It's a cycle, a continuous cycle. A critical element of this that Greg is going to touch on now is evolution, not revolution.
Part of the, for me, the, the real purpose of creating this kind of alignment and the value of creating this kind of alignment through the direction, the goal-setting, the visioning, the communication to the manager, his reflection of that in the budget that he presents to you, your adoption, the value goes back to that municipal corporation. And one of the things that we are trying to provide the community and the investment community, the development community, and that's stability. One of the biggest threats is changes over time of the elected leadership. And if the elected leadership is constantly changing direction, now, I will hope that that this city isn't guessed. I didn't work there, but there, there's a city in San Bernardino County that for decades would go, every two years, it would either become a 3-2 for development or a 3-2 against development. And often they would fire the city manager because they'd say, "You were, you're for development and we're against development and we're going to fire you." He was just following directions. Yeah, but they would do that, so it would be wholesale changes of staff, wholesale changes of direction. Now, when I went to Ontario, one of the things they wanted was a minor league arena. Somebody said that occasionally you have trouble hearing me. Please just raise your hand if you do. The older I've gotten, the softer I talk. So when I went there, they wanted to build an arena. They'd been working on it for two years before I got there. We built it in the 10th year I was there. So 12 years. Now, we spent a lot of time, effort, money. I mean, we toured all over the United States, looking at arenas, trying to figure out what features we wanted, what was the best design, looking at how to finance it. We spent lots of time and money. The problem is that if every time a council changes, if that direction is changed, all of that money is wasted. Now, the system is not designed to lock future councils in. That's not the purpose. That's not what we're trying to achieve. Budgets, we always talk about budgets, are living documents. Budgets are based on assumptions. As the assumptions change, you need to change the document. As new things come up in the community, you need the flexibility. But all of that should be this. It should be evolution, not revolution. And that's what this system is designed, to create evolution. It should evolve. It should be regularly looked at. It should be through the budget, through the updates, looked at. You know, are the goals changing? Have they changed? But it should cause or create evolution, and that's the stability that we're trying to provide the community and especially the investors. Yes, sir?
Rather than, if that, re-ing that, let me show this to you. I think you might be going to get to this eventually. This is my version of what you just shared.
That's exactly right. That's exactly what it is. Yep.
We'll tell this later.
Yeah, well, not, not really, but it is, you've, you've got it right because this is, it's, it's all, it is a continuing cycle of going through you doing your job, then the staff doing their job. And part of their job is to provide you with the best information in terms of decision-making, the best information that they can with what the choices are and what the costs are. That's, that's their job, and it's your job to not only set the direction, but to continually adjust the direction. Nothing's locked in stone, but we also don't want to create fits and starts, you know, and that, yeah, so, yes, sir.
I have a question. So how did you do it with five election cycles?
In five election cycles?
How to build that stadium?
Uh, well, uh...
What did you do?
Well, I'm a, I was never a big believer in financing. I never did a general fund financing in my entire career, either at the county or the city. We always had a, it's a little bit of an aggression, but it's an important question. You know, some cities, when they're having financial problems, cut and cut and cut, and they try to cut their way into balance. In Ontario, we always tried to earn our way into balance. So we were a very entrepreneurial city, and what, we actually built $150 million arena with cash. And we did it, the first thing was we bought a piece of property in the community that was suitable for the arena, bought it from a home developer, and now, it was, we bought it from the Lewis Company, and they had a partner. But that piece of dirt, if you go back and look, I was highly criticized in the paper for suggesting that the council buy it. We bought it for $1.85 a square foot, and it was several hundred acres. And when we sold it for $14, $15 a square foot, we were able to build it with cash. So that's how we got it done. Sorry for the digression.
No, no, it's good. I wanted to hear about it. Thank you.
So that's what we're trying to achieve, is evolution, not revolution.
Okay, we'll move into the first piece, which is the vision. Where are we going? Where does the council see the future of the community, the organization? Now, we do a little bit here of discussion on what a vision is because through our very scientific research, we have determined that 99.87654% of organizations have on their website a vision statement that is not a vision statement. And so we like to start with a discussion of what a vision actually should be. A vision statement describes the future. It is the vision. It is not what you do today. It is the future of your entity. It's what you're trying to create together. It is your guiding beacon. A vision statement should be a lot of different things. My favorite on this list is the second one down on the right-hand side, which is memorable. If your city manager and your staff and your community and your council can't remember what it says, they're not going to be able to reference it. Just as a little example, our vision statement in our company is four words. Every single one of our team members knows exactly what that is. It's nationally recognized, locally trusted. We're not there, right? We're just little Jacob Green and Associates right now. But someday, we will be, and we want our team members to think about, as big as we get, to always be locally trusted. Comes up in all of our conversations about what endeavors we should go on, where we should invest our resources. Same thing for a city. Vision statement should start with, "We envision. We will be. Our vision for the future is..." Search any city that you would like almost, and you will always find our vision statement. "We provide services to keep the community safe." It's not really the vision. It's much more of a mission than a vision. All right. Here's some examples. A vision statement. What organization has the following vision statement? "A world without Alzheimer's disease." Thank you. Fantastic. If I had a Tesla to give you or something like that, I would give the car away, right? But that's exactly right. Very clear, "We understand what they are trying to create in the future." Second example, "To be the world's most loved, most efficient, and most profitable airline." Whose vision statement? Southwest. That's exactly right. Second car, second Tesla for you. That's exactly right. Southwest Airline. Third example, this one is rarely answered, "To be always the desired place for great coffee beverages and delicious complimentary donuts and bakery products to enjoy with family and friends." Tesla for you. Yes, exactly. Dunkin' Donuts. Now, in their vision statement, they did something very interesting. It was intentional, it was interesting. Anybody notice anything here about their vision? That's exactly right. You got complimentary, like, what, what do you mean, complimentary? And then the very first thing, this is a donut place, but do they mention the donuts or coffee first? Coffee first, right? And they're giving very clear marching orders to their entire organization about what's going to be our focus, more coffee drinkers than donut eaters in the, you know, in the world. Their vision statement is very intentional. Now, here's what we heard from all of you in our conversations and in discussions. One of the things that we mentioned is that we really try to do our homework so that we, your time is very valuable. A 12-hour goal-setting is probably not what you want, so we bring to you what we've learned from your organization. Here's some of the things that we heard from you. We heard younger people... We heard younger people with opportunities in the future. Safe, inviting, accessible. I built a good life here for my child. Opportunities, solid jobs for the area, economic development, space and high-tech industry jobs in the future of our community. These are things we heard about the future. Now, this is separate from the goals conversation and the priorities conversations that we have. We're going to get to that in just a moment. But in terms of the vision, first question for you is, did we hear you right? Are these the things that you are thinking about as a future? And when you think about the future, is there anything missing? Sir?
I think you're right for over the 10 to 20-year thing.
Longer term?
That's right. Or total being...
And, and you would say total being decades, decades out?
Yeah, everybody is coming.
And could you say a little bit more about what you see as the difference, and, and what you would like to see as the difference?
But they want neighborhoods to raise their value, to feel comfortable.
Hmm. Neighborhoods.
Homes, neighbors.
Homes, neighbors. So Michelle, by the way, is taking all of our notes. She's capturing everything.
They want, they want pods of places for certain types of industry.
Hmm.
We tried this way back in the origins of the city. But things changed, and all of a sudden, those became almost unusable.
Hmm.
They adapted them, they adapted them, but they don't fit quite right.
I see.
And they never will.
Hmm.
Ultimately, they're going to change. But tourism is one of our big things, and it changes, the reasons change. It was all this, and that was, was actually just agriculture. Cattle was a big one. We got a lot of rodeo, and all sorts of things. Then, and then it moved into wineage. Now, the beer is coming.
Hmm.
So now we're very alcoholic. But also, we have Spaceport coming. And Spaceport ultimately is going to be out of space. It's going to go way beyond just our satellites.
Yeah.
It's going to go out and literally mine the, of the, and go very, very deep resource back here.
Yeah.
And we could be part of that future, too.
Yeah.
But we still have to keep areas of the city that are more or less free to the neighborhoods, and that also, with the travel rates, whether they be service or in the air.
Yeah.
Because we have no idea where the satellite is going to go in the future.
Yeah, you're right.
We have driverless vehicles coming along very rapidly. We also have those, they can now go up there, take pictures, get the, get a ride out.
Yeah.
And that can be mine work. But we don't know where that's going.
Yeah.
And at that point, we have to know how to repurpose our parks.
Yeah.
Because we may not have sufficient position.
Yeah.
We don't know where that's going. We still have to keep it livable.
Yeah.
And that's where we have to make sure that downtown, especially maybe enlarged tremendously.
I'm excited...
Go in a particular direction, because that's where the tourism is still going to come from. And it has to be very tourist friendly. And there's your town history, which they're going to have to stay, have a place to stay some night. And they're going to have to have a place to eat, and fix the line. And even for all of those things. But it has to be done in an orderly, long-term vision.
I love it. Sometimes in commu-, thank you, councilmember, and sometimes in communities that we've worked with, there's a vision statement, which, by the way, we generally say, you know, it's, not, we're not going to say this is, oh, this is 100% perfect, right? This is perfect. Does it generally give us some directional focus for the future of our organization? But what we've seen, and what may end up being in your final product, is some descriptors, some additional elements that talk about some of those things that you just mentioned. We've seen sort of explanations on vision statements that can be helpful for giving some more, more direction. Thank you for the comment, and I also heard housing, yeah?
I just wanted to add a couple of thoughts. I mean, I think this is very interesting, that these were some of the thoughts that you heard from all of us. You know, one kind of nuanced word I would think to throw in there would be, like, economic development and mobility. That sort of communicates a few different things, and I just appreciate that there's comments there around kind of younger people, and families, and opportunities, and making sure that that isn't just job opportunities, that it's kind of whole lifestyle opportunities, which connects with the economic development and mobility piece, so...
Thank you.
Three words, live, work, and play.
Yeah, live, work, play.
That's why we, that's why we're here.
That is basic. I don't see mine specifically out there, because I represent us at the region, I represent us at the state, and I represent us nationally. I'm also represent the region then, at the state and at the national level. I represent all of the cities of the United States on the Board of Directors for all of the regional governments of the United States and our territories. So I'm the one who goes out there and gets the money, because I'm the one at the table. And I'm very, very adamant that it is true. If you are not at the table, you're part of the meal on the table, and you're not going to get anything, because you have to be voicing the protections for your own jurisdiction at those levels, on a constant basis, not on an occasional basis. Not just chatting with an assemblyman or a senator, but actually with the staff, with the cabinet, with the heads of those departments at whatever, whether it's a state level, national level, regional level, whatever level. That's where you have to be, and you have to be protecting your jurisdiction, and making sure you get your share. Now, you still have to keep in mind all the other people you're representing in that position, so you have to make sure they may get their share. And by working with them to get their share as well, that's where you build the alliances you need to get everything you need, because it takes the alliances, just like it takes this alliance. The aligning of these five people is just as important as aligning the cities, and aligning the regions, and aligning the Congress, and aligning the federal administration. All of those things are very, very important.
Thank you.
And somehow, that has to be in there.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Mayor, I think you had...
Oh, what's running through my head is, you know, kind of our environment, and who we are here on the Central Coast, as opposed to other city, big...
What differentiates us?
Yes. Rural versus urban, and I think that's, I think should be in our statement, you know, a community that's inviting, you know, safe. That kind of a thing that describes us, if you were, you know, hearing this from a bunch of other vision statements, and then you put the picture behind it.
Yes.
You see, that's what I'm trying to say, versus, like, a big LA vision versus a Paso vision.
Yes.
That's the kind of language I'd like to see in it.
I'm going to be curious, when we show you in the next slide, if you think we got anywhere closer, what we could maybe change to incorporate that. It's really important key. Thank you.
What, kind of segue from, from John, the, in my real estate practice, what, what I see as, as very attractive to people that visit here is the family lifestyle. People are quite enamored, they drive around, they see children playing on our sports fields. How do you do that? What, that's just amazing that that still happens. You know, what's the secret? We don't really have a secret, we just have amazing volunteers. We have moms and dads that still care, that, that just want to make that happen for their children. They experience that here, growing up. They want to replicate that to their children.
That was, you know, all five of you said that, maybe, not those exact words, but in that exact, all five of you said, "We've benefited so much from the environment here. We want to make sure that our future generations can live here, can be here, can stay here." All five of you, it's really a, thank you for, for bringing that up, because I think it was such a dominant theme that we heard in terms of what you hope for the future. So let us show you now just our first draft stab. And again, to make this as efficient as possible, we have Michelle capture it. Normally, by the way, I, I do take notes, but I would need a third arm today to do that. So we have it all captured, and we'll take the feedback. We're going to show you the vision statement that we just drafted as our first attempt, get another set of feedback from you in terms of what you see and what you would like changed, and then we'll go back with staff and make those modifications for your future review. Okay? So, oh, and the last one was diverse, oh, I'm sorry, I blew it. The last thing that we heard from you was diverse economy, and that was brought up by the council. So thank you. So here's the, just draft vision. "We envision a thriving community with a diverse economy and quality jobs that empower every generation to build their future here in Paso Robles."
Pretty good.
I like that, I like that.
Do we get more than 50%, 70% there?
You've got it.
You got it? Okay, that's great.
Build their future, that's, that's a good key word there, too.
Build their future.
Yeah. Of course, it doesn't always fit for everybody, because a lot of people come here not to build their future, but to end their future, so to speak.
Oh.
You know, to retire. In other words, they've done it.
I think we should avoid that in the, in the vision statement, Mr. Mayor, if that's... But, you know, we, we, Greg and Michelle and I, we don't often put the name of the community in the vision, but we actually thought that there's something so special and different and unique, that it might not be bad, in case the vision floats out there, for people to know, no, this is, this is a place where you want future generations, this is a place, you know, so, so we included it. It's not, not something we normally do, but we just thought there's some character here. There's something that makes you a little bit different and special here in Paso.
So may I make one, one comment? The only word missing out of that is welcoming.
Welcoming, welcoming.
And I'll, I'll make a, I just want to make a comment. In our, my years in my wife's business, I would talk to a lot of our guests, and they said, "Your staff and everybody we talk to and meet in this town are so friendly. Why is that?" And the reason why is because they all enjoy and want to be living here. So welcoming.
I, I think, I think that makes a lot of sense, if we, not to get into wordsmithing, but I agree with you. "We envision a welcoming and thriving community with a diverse economy." That, that makes a lot of sense. Any other feedback?
That's what we're known for, our friendliness.
You are. As an outsider, I can definitely verify that. Okay.
Okay.
Some consensus. Okay, excellent, great. Well, that was fantastic. Very good. Greg, anything else? Are you good? Okay. All right, so let's move on to goals. Now, you, you indicate, let's not get cut up on language, you indicate initiatives in yours, as, as you well know, there's sort of buckets, and then there's initiatives. So currently, you have six overarching goals, priority areas, categories. And then, what we heard is here in the middle, and these are the various initiatives, specific projects and focus areas that you wanted to make sure came forward. And because the font is fairly small, I'll go ahead and read them. And on the last column here, because you should never put everything up on there, everybody will just read, right, and not listen, but the last column is going to be some very minor changes that we recommend, based on what we heard from all of you, and this is subject to your thoughts and your input today. So what we heard in each category, under transportation and infrastructure, we heard a focus on streets, using local road crews, traffic, hotel shuttles, and water basin management exploration. Under public safety, while public safety is blank, all five of you said that you wanted to make sure this remained, remained a safe community for all who visit. So, in other words, very, very much, all five were aligned on that. For cultural, recreational, open spaces, you talked about parks, recreation, athletic fields, and youth, teen, and senior activities. Homelessness response, in the area of this, which we're going to have a little change recommended here, you talked about affordable housing, housing in general, that went beyond just the category of affordable housing, land acquisition for homes, so that homes could actually be built in the community, and the housing authority support and engagement. And then in our community and economic development, you talked about jobs, economic diversity, economic development, trades, the spaceport jobs, university partnerships, diversification of industries and revenue sources and jobs here, healthcare access and business development. And under the category of an engaged and response government, which is the current title that you have for your priority area, you talked about maybe a longer budget cycle, a two-to-three-year budget cycle instead of an annual budget cycle. You talked about long-term budgeting projections, wanting to understand what the future health financially looks like. Consultant use curtailed, I don't know if I should say that out loud, but, but you talked about wanting to make sure that consultants were managed and the use was minimized, and bilingual services increased and enhanced for engagement with the community. Now, just before we open it to feedback on if we heard correctly or what might be missing, just want to again explain this final column, which is evolution, not revolution. We don't need to do big changes here. We just have two suggested modifications for you. One is transitioning homelessness response to housing and homelessness, because there was such a housing emphasis from the council in this last few months. And then, we changed from engaged and responsive government, we changed to efficient and effective governance, or efficient and effective government, something like that, to include the elements that you had discussed. So with that, take a pause there, see if there's any feedback or input from the council.
Did a good job.
Oh, good. Excellent. Thank you.
I, I have one, one comment, if I may. Oh, go, you go ahead.
Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, something I'm not seeing, and I'm not sure if it got mentioned, but I, it's been high on my mind. This idea of engaging kind of the middle generation, the working family generation, so it would go under engaged and responsive government.
Okay.
Um, we do, we have specific advisory body committees that are advising us on, you know, teen and youth issues, and senior issues, not necessarily something in between. And I think we're missing out on, and it's hard, because our working families are working, but I think we're missing out on an opportunity to be serving that generation, when we all pretty much agreed in the vision statement, that that's what we should be looking towards.
Michelle, you got working family engagement?
Thank you. And, you know, just on that same line, one of the wonderful things about this community is the volunteerism. We have nine employees running a library full-time, day and night. The rest are all volunteers, running that whole thing. And those volunteers also provide almost, between $40,000 and $50,000 a year toward the budget of that library. So volunteerism has to come in there somewhere.
Got that, Michelle? Thank you.
So on your economic development, or community and economic development, I think it's really important to have spaceport jobs and continued development at the airport. There's a lot of different, large companies are developing out at the airport, and they're probably becoming our center of employment in the future, because there's going to be so many jobs as they develop. So I think it's important to have there.
So Michelle, airport development and jobs, airport jobs.
Yeah, not just spaceport jobs.
Yeah, no, it's...
Thank you.
There's a lot of the company.
Yeah.
Just to, Councilmember Beal's point, the youth commission, if I understood your, your question, the youth commission was expanded to include Questa College students. We had one person pick up on it last year, and I don't think anybody picked up on it on this recruitment cycle, but, you know, your point's taken, we need to do a better outreach. It seemed easier for the recruiting team to reach out to high school students. I think maybe staff needs to reach out to, to the college crowd, so, thanks.
Yeah, Jacob, I like that last one, engaged, responsive government versus the efficient, effective. Takes two to engage, all right? And a lot of times, public doesn't really engage until it really affects them personally in front of their home or something. So, you know, being, you know, efficient in, in what we want to see as a vision and as a, as a city, I think that's, that's a good word to put out there versus, you know, engaged, because, again, it takes two people to really engage. And so, you know, we have a vision, we want to see what the city, we're elected to do this, and staff want to, you know, move it forward, but being efficient, you know, I think is a better word to describe what we really want to do. And be responsive, of course, if the public want to engage, of course, at that point, but they're going to engage when they see something they don't like, but, you know, they're not going to say much if everything's going well, too. That's another sign that everything's pretty well done. So efficient and effective governance, I think, is good. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
Go ahead, Chris.
So, under the economic development bucket, I think the spaceport has tremendous potential for the community. My concern as just looking at things is that we might be putting too many eggs in that basket. I know that there are related businesses and things like that, but I don't want to be focusing on that, the exclusion of other jobs, industries, headed household jobs.
Yes. And also, in the last sentence, bilingual should become multilingual. Because for the future, we may have mostly two languages now, but in the region, we're getting more Vietnamese, Chinese, people that are Asiatic that speak a different language. And we may have to ultimately, you know, include them somehow in how we treat people and how we inform.
Number 10.
And, yeah, one more, one more comment of mine. Under the efficient and effective governance, I'd like to see more social media and advertising our completeness of government, so that it's a form of disclosure, of letting people see what we're doing. And we need to do a really good, more of that. And I know, Chris, our city manager's got some ideas on there. And I think we just need to put it out there more of all the things that we're accomplishing, because we wear so many hats in our government and our city council, that the more the folks in our community can understand what we're doing through social media and advertising, I think it would help.
Thank you, Mary. Number 10.
So, to Fred's point, I'm not sure we're headed down AI, but I think the use of AI will take care of some of the translation issues. Terrifies me where it's going to end up, but we have to embrace it, whether we like it or not. So, where we stand with it. But I think it'll certainly be beneficial once we learn to master it.
Multilingual conversation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Along the lines of what's been said on kind of the bilingual and communications and engagement, I think that our being very intentional about our partnerships with other community organizations would be very productive in terms of outreach, engagement, communications. And I, obviously, we've been through a lot of changes this year, but I think that's an opportunity for us.
Thank you. Michelle, grab everything? Any clarification needed from your point of view? So, just before I ask your city manager to weigh in and just comment, Greg has a great line that we, as you know, from today, he has a lot of amazing lines. And one of them that we've tried to trademark is the everything is good syndrome. And so, you know, all the stuff, you know, we've never heard a bad idea. Well, I don't know, never. But most, most everything is always good. And it's really up to your city manager and your staff to figure out, based on what is heard, how do you translate that into a budget? And what resources do you have and not have? And not for a decision today. But one of the things that your city manager may decide to do, depending on how this input and discussions go with staff, is to come back to you with a prioritization tool that we utilize to help the city manager decide, hey, everything that we heard, we're not able to incorporate. We may need some council direction on prioritization. So, that may or may not be, it really depends on what it looks like in terms of the budget, maybe something that the city manager comes back to you with.
Don't want to interrupt the flow here, but Jacob just touched on something that we recommend as best practice. Because everything is good, people don't come before you and ask for bad things. They ask for good things, you know? Better road maintenance, more public safety, soccer fields, whatever it is, they don't ask for bad things.
Well, sometimes it matters opinion on that.
Well, I would agree with the mayor. It is a general statement. It is a general statement. I will agree. On occasion, they, but largely, they're asking for good things. The difficulty for elected bodies is it's very hard to say no to something that's good, that you too agree is good and you would like to have. So, what we strongly recommend is that resource allocation decisions should never be made without complete comparative context of your needs and responsibilities. The only way to counter or to justify something, saying no to something that's good, is to talk about what's needed or missing that's better. So, if you have a high crime rate and you need more officers on the street to combat that, to keep the community safe, that's something that the community can understand in terms of, yes, we would like to fund X, Y, or Z, but we've got to keep you safe first. So, you know, we always recommend, don't make one-off resource allocation decisions. Do it in the total context of all of your responsibilities.
Got it.
Can you just remind me again? So, this is the direction that we're giving to Mr. Hewitt. He's going to go back to the executive staff, and they're going to pull from that the goals and the budgets. So, this is kind of, this is it. This is a really important phase to be looking at this.
It's your, it's your start. It's your start. It's an opportunity for the city manager to take the information that he heard today, to take the data, translate that into a refined, with our, you know, support certainly, into a refined list like you have from your '24 to '26, and allow the budget to reflect those goals. And if the city manager needs additional support and direction because we can't do everything, everything is good, that is when you may come back to the council with prioritization.
Yeah. The budget, when the city manager is suggesting, this is you're giving, as Jacob started the day with, we're going to be talking about the high level. The what? The city manager in the budget is coming back with the how. And so, the city manager will be coming back to you to say, here's how staff heard you and are suggesting that we implement what you, the direction you've given us. That's what the budget is.
So, I would just add one little thing on the housing and homelessness. I mean, we talk a lot about affordable housing and housing authority, but then housing in general? And some clarification I would add to that would be like the diversity of housing, right?
Well, the diversity of housing and the, and the diversity of affordability.
That's exactly.
What we heard a lot about from you was wanting to have housing that people who grow up here, are educated here, and would like to stay here can afford. And you all tied it wisely to the creation of jobs that allowed them to stay. So, that's what we're referring to there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to offer the city manager an opportunity to, if there's any clarification needed or any additional information, there was a lot provided, but I want to make sure that we just check in with the city manager.
Thank you. No, I think the list overall is, are things that we've talked about in the past and some things that I've talked to all of you about, you know, in terms of things you would like to see. So, I don't have, not a lot of surprises up here. I wanted to touch upon maybe four or five things that I didn't, either didn't see or I'd like clarification on, you know. One, and probably not, we don't need to get too deep in it today. The one thing that jumped out to me on this is consultant use is curtailed, which, on the surface level, I totally get that. I think it's always the opportunity to look at how we use consultants and making sure that we're prudent. There's also the other side of that conversation, that the use of consultants is a way that we can amplify the work that our team is doing and support the work that they're doing, and it impacts certain processes. I think the development process is probably the biggest one where we leverage consultants. Maybe it's a look on how we can use consultants more efficiently in that process. So, that one stuck out to me, just wanting to kind of get a little bit more information. Councilmember Bausch brought up a very important thing that I had in my notes is, and I was wondering if I'd see it up here or not, is how, where, and when are we going to be using AI in our city operations? We're already doing a lot of exploratory work. In some cases, we are using AI. But building out policy around that and really creating a vision for how AI is going to be used in our organization's important to me, because I do think that if we don't go into that space, there are going to be areas where we will be left behind.
Just keep it out of the legal realm.
We've already had those discussions. And then, engagement was brought up, and so, I'm happy to hear that. I think as we build back capacity with, in our office, both with the assistant city manager as well as our new management analyst that'll be brought on right after David gets on board. That's his first task that I talked to him yesterday about, is to fill that management analyst position, which is going to be taking the lead role in coordinating, in amplifying messaging around what we're doing as a city, organizing different and various community engagement opportunities. So, I'm happy to hear that. One thing that I don't know if it was specifically called out on the public safety side of thing that I wanted to raise was, you know, the future of public safety with Measure J-20 sunset on the horizon. I know it feels like it's out there a little bit in 2032. That's two presidential cycles away. How are we wanting to potentially start to talking about that? Because that right there is about $13 million a year. It supports, you know, several police officer and firefighter positions. It's a critical funding piece to achieve, I think, your goals and the community's goals around public safety. So, that's, of course, been weighing on my mind. And then, you know, on the development side, Greg talked about being an investable community. Those are my terms, but Greg hit on that. And how do we continue to lean into our economic development strategic plan, investing in the work that Paul and our development team is doing? How can we continue to make improvements internally to make sure that when there is a choice to be made from someone who's going to be investing dollars, that they pick Paso Robles? As opposed to, no offense to my friends in other communities and around here, but that they pick Paso Robles. So, those are just some of the things that have risen to the top of my thought process. I have some other things that are kind of more in the weeds and probably not appropriate for today. But the last thing I'll leave you with, and I don't know if it fits in the efficient and effective government area, and I think it gets to some of the comments on budgeting, is how will the economy, both in the short term and the midterm, impact our ability to tackle a lot of these priorities? Maybe not a goal, but it's something that I'm thinking about as we're getting closer to budget season for next year and as we're talking about the future years. So, with that, I appreciate the opportunity to chime in and appreciate, again, the council's feedback and input. This, to me, is very, very helpful to hear what you had to say and your priorities as, again, we get closer to the budget season beyond. So, I really appreciate the time spent on this.
So, I'd like to make a comment on AI. I think it should be in our government process, but it's a tool. It's not a, it's a future tool, it's an occurrence tool. And I think we need to treat it as a tool and not as a revelation or a all fix. So, I think AI is important to say that about AI. On the public safety, I think we could solve that with the J-20 with continued financial support to maintain our public safety. I think that's going to be a critical issue for the rest of our lives here, because it gets more and more costly.
Along that line, that's how we solve the other one. Just take the timeline off.
Yeah.
On the next three authors.
Well, I think it's really important that we're, you know, we're facing the cost of public safety continuing to climb, and we have to deal with that as a community. And right now, we've solved it, but we have to continue to solve that. And then, the other comment that I forgot to mention was in homelessness response, continued support of getting people in homes, homeless, dealing with homelessness. It's on the title, but there's nothing on the comment. So, continued support of homeless services.
Chris, go ahead.
Efficient homeless services.
So, I think where I was going on the AI is just sort of a primer on AIs, especially as it relates to municipal terms. What can we do to understand it more effectively? It's new. You know, I'm sure that there'll be good education opportunities for that. Chris, I think you had mentioned at the end of your comments, finance, same, same kind of thing. What, we have new projects that are going to be coming along as we expand, you know, water treatment, things like that. Some of you guys have been down the road. Is somebody who's been on council for a little, just a short while. You're very comfortable with a lot of those terms. Chris and I are still new, benefit from learning new things. Please don't take us for granted that we know everything the way you do. Explain to us what we should know. It would be very beneficial. I'm hoping that, and I'm going to say this just in case it's not, while I've been participatory in the past with other entities, what's missing, I think, in this exercise would be facilities. As we expand facilities, is that included under transportation and infrastructure? If not, I'd like to see facilities included in this exercise. Really good list up there, but I think it would benefit. And what I don't see up there, and maybe it'll be included in a future day, we talked about an evaluation of the city manager, but I would like to see a board, excuse me, a council self-evaluation as well. I think there's some good learning experiences from that. A governance handbook, perhaps, and a governance calendar would be perhaps a good topic to discuss. How that might be beneficial. Thank you.
Just one, one more complicated comment. So, Chris Bausch and I sat in our housing constraints yesterday. And one of the things that we heard from one of the new members is that there's a cap on development, a cap on surplus housing. So, to round that out, I think we need to say we need to continue the growth or moderate growth of housing in all ways. So, just not workforce or affordable housing or, but I think we need to make a statement about continuing our housing so that we have a continuance of growth. And when you cap it, so maybe it's a housing policy that continues our growth. I don't know what to say on that, but I think it's really important because when outside developers or people come in to help us develop homes, they're looking at that and saying, oh, there's a cap. So, there's only so far you go. And I believe infrastructure, we have some kind of regulation or cap. But I don't want to not recognize the growth need. Thank you.
But I have to comment on that. We do have a cap. It's provided by the banks. When the banks think there's too much, they won't loan. They don't loan, they don't get built. But the other thing is, supply and demand is what, what creates affordability. You need a little bit of oversupply, about 2% to 3% minimum in order to have some kind of reasonableness in your purchase prices and your rents. Because if somebody is fearful that they won't be able to sell Because if somebody is fearful that they won't be able to sell or won't be able to rent, that's when they drop the price a little bit, and that's when things get affordable. So we've got to remember that aspect of supply and demand and how the market functions.
Oh, go ahead, Chris. Go ahead. Yeah.
It takes me a while to digest all this, so thank you for your patience. In transportation and infrastructure, I don't know if we mentioned it during our conversations, but Mr. Strong's been a great advocate in terms of transit and local transit, and we have so much pressure in terms of circulation and things like that. Like to see that captured in the notes. In terms of cultural recreational open spaces, I want to make sure library is counted in that. I would think of library as being a cultural resource, but it's such a tremendous asset for our community in all different levels. And then in the economic development, I've been thinking a lot, and you actually spoke about it earlier, how we are trying to attract people to spend dollars in our community, and we are competing with other areas for those dollars. I'm thinking a lot about how we are investing our public dollars, right? I know we have procurement that gives an accommodation for local purchasing, but that is a way for local public dollars to kind of stay in the community. And there are other goods and services that the city procures. I think it makes sense to examine if those are staying in our community. I would just assume see that here rather than having those dollars be for a, you know, not that LA is bad, but, you know, for a baker's field, you know? So they, thank you.
I think that's a really good point, Chris. Thank you for bringing that up, put emphasis on supporting our own local citizens. We have talked about that, and I think that's up there with our local athletic fields. I think it goes beyond athletic fields. We've heard this a lot in some of our advisory bodies. Our locals feel that they're being ignored at the expense of the emphasis put on our tourism. We need to address that.
Let me weigh in a little bit. It's something that Chris Huat and I were speaking of the other day, and we actually spoke about it yesterday at Rotary Meeting, too, and the AI component of what that can do to help on a multitude of levels, but specifically communication. I think to Chris's point, you know, the J-20 is coming up in 2032, and that's one of those things where we need to communicate, communicate, communicate. And I think the AI tool can help expand our staff to be more than what one person can do. And it's evolving. I mean, this thing is just exploding right now from what we're understanding. And standing in front of the wave with what can be done with AI and how can work to communicate better, I think is going to be a great tool that we can do to get the message out to the public of what the council vision is and what our goals are, keep that in front of them, and what it's doing currently, you know, like J-20 money is right now, what it's doing for the public. That kind of a thing where we can use that tool to get it out there frequently, to keep it in front of them as to why we need this and what they did, they voted for it, and this is what we're doing with it. There's all kinds of reasons we can put out there to explain what, how important it is, really. But, you know, the AI tool, like I said, it's funny, the other day, that's what I had a problem with the agenda item the other day with the airport seal. You know, you gave it, if you give it the information that you want to see, in five to 10 minutes, they'll put something in front of you that, yeah, that, I mean, it makes you not so much an expert, but it gives you more opportunity to understand what can be done. And that's why I was trying to understand, you know, it can save our city money if we use it properly. And, you know, again, the biggest thing I see though currently is the communication tool that we can use with staff, making them more powerful, so to speak, with the public. So, thank you.
One more comment. Create, maintain, and grow economic value. So I really think it needs to be mentioned in the engaged and responsive government section, and I can't remember what we used to call it, but creative team to be creative and respond quickly to the needs of interested developers and people coming into cities. I'm dealing with this all the time, and we had a little, we had some kind of a structure before, but basically it's people that can bring more, our community development director, our city manager, assistant city manager together to help potential investors and people who want to move here with their companies, that we not only could handle it and do it, we're getting housing now, but we give them the pathway to help develop what they need and help them in their process of their pathways. So I don't know what you call that, but I think that's really an important area in the government. Thank you.
I apologize, but you keep giving me opportunities to talk about best practices. One of the things that, in that regard, when we talk about, back to winning the investment, you hit on something. If you go into most planning and building counters in cities, planning, building, engineering, what do they think their job is? They think their job is to make somebody comply with the codes, with the community standards. The codes are the community standards. Back to Ontario, and I apologize for always going back there, but thank you for the, thank you for the opportunity to do so, because it's easier for me to relate to. In Ontario, we taught them, that's not your job. Your job is to help them comply, not make them comply, because the sooner they're open making money, the sooner we make money, and we need to make money to provide for better services.
Very good.
One last thing, the real last thing. So, you know, on the city hall renovation, I was so happy to see when that contract came back to us, that it was local contractor, like a local head contractor and local subs. And I see those local trucks in the library parking lot. We were, you know, given that information as part of the contract package, but I think that's so important to recognize that those dollars, and we have a lot of those kinds of dollars, you know, multiply many times over in our own community.
Stay local.
Don't you think?
I think we might have to move here. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for all that input. That was amazing. Michelle has been capturing all the input for us. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for providing your perspective. You got a lot of information, a lot of good work to do ahead of us. That was amazing. That was exactly what we hoped to get out of a conversation and a discussion like this. So thank you for being willing to share and provide the input. It's so refreshing for us when it's an interactive discussion with the council. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that concludes our presentation. We're certainly here to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, we know you have a full agenda remaining after open session.
Yeah, Jacob, can I, can we as a council get your PowerPoint presentation? All these slides that you've been sending us or showing us here?
Absolutely. We'll make the goals, the vision, that kind of stuff. We'll actually send it over to staff to distribute to the council.
Very good. Thank you.
And will you have your, a lot of the extra things we mentioned here on that list?
Yeah, we're going to go back and work with the city manager to make sure that the city manager and team have all that additional discussion, contributions added to the process, and then the city manager will determine whether or not a further prioritization process is needed by the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do we adjourn and vote on the discussion to provide direction to staff on city goals and priorities for fiscal year 2026, '27 budget cycle? If so, I so move.
Mayor Hammond.
Hang on. Go ahead.
We haven't opened for public comment yet.
Yes.
Okay.
So open up this item now to any public comment. Anybody wishing to address the council, please come forward. Welcome. Come on up.
It's our ninja chamber.
My name's me, Dori Feldman, and I live here in Paso, and I just had a quick idea for the vision statement. Passerobos, a place where everyone can live the American dream.
Oh, that's nice.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for a discussion or action.
Well, I made a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go ahead and, yeah, repeat that if you would.
We actually don't even need a motion. The idea was just to give direction to staff, and I think the city manager's gotten a lot of direction.
I do have a question about this. My question about this is, so will we go to the public session of goals for the city next, or how does that work?
Yeah, so how I envision it is, you know, one, as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to use this information and work with Jacob and his team to bring your ideas and your feedback to our executive team. And then, yes, as we get into the budget session in the first quarter of next year, we will have an opportunity, I think, as Jacob mentioned in the flow, to engage with the community, to make sure we're on the right path, get additional feedback, make any sort of adjustments, and then that'll flow into budget adoption. So that was my long-winded way of telling you, yes, there will be that opportunity.
Okay. So at this point, then, direction is given to staff, and we'll move on then to the next agenda item, which is closed session items. Elizabeth Hall, would you tell us what we're going to be talking about?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We are going to go into closed session on one item. It is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B, and the title of the position is the city manager.
Very good. Public comment regarding this closed session matter? Anyone? Thank you. Okay, bring it back, then we stand adjourned for closed session.
Good job. Well done.
Fred, where are you going? Go over there for closed session.
That was excellent.
Are we going to stay in here and close the room, or do you want to?
We're going to move over to the...
This is some great plays on Broadway. Cats for one.
Okay, well, Pastoral City Council will reconvene at 12:20 from closed session. Elizabeth Hall, will you tell us what we need to know?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The council went into closed session on one item. It was public employee performance evaluation regarding this city manager, and there is no reportable action.
Very good. Seeing no other people here, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Gregory, second by Strong. All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Great job, everyone.